Breathe in, don't exhale. All right, shall we? Okay, they're still here. We have a poll. We have a few minutes before we get to the presentation.
They're gonna go first.
Look, Susie. Official, at least for the next fifteen minutes. It's just fifteen minutes.
Well, maybe as president, you can tell her.
Got it, thank you. Thanks.
All right, everybody, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Education of Parsippany Troy Hills to order on Thursday, May 23rd, 2024. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and the district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to newspapers on May 10th and May 20th, 2024. These include Daily Record, Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Happened in Parsippany, and Parsippany Pack, and of course, the district website. This regular public meeting is being video recorded as per Bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our Voteg YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please, Robin?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Goldur?
Here.
Mr. Choppa?
Here. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on into the meeting. Can we have our committee reports? Seneca, please.
Hi, everyone. On May 2nd, PHHS had the World Language Honor Society induction ceremony. The ceremony was for new inductees and seniors receiving their cords. Two students in the digital photo class had their artworks selected to be displayed at the Casserie Theater at Montclair State University for the 2024 New Jersey Congressional Art Competition on Friday, May 3rd. We had a military fair on the patio where students had the chance to meet with representatives from the Marines, Army, Navy, and National Guard to explore post-high school options. For city jacket fittings were happening during lunch on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024. And then, on that same day, we had seniors wear their commitment sweatshirts or shirts for Commitment Day. PHHS is gonna start an esports program for 2024 to 2025 and will be qualified as a sport. They will be competing within the Garden State Esports against other high schools. Graduation will be held on Thursday, June 20th at 1:30 at the stadium, and practice will be on the 18th and 19th. Cap and gown pickup will be held June 14th through the 19th. Senior internship started this week with internship students celebrating last Friday as their last day of school. Project Grad will be at Adventure Crossing USA at 8:00 PM on Thursday, June 20th. Class of 2024 lawn signs are being sold for $27. The band and choir spring concert was held on May 21st. Yesterday was the NHS Junior Induction and Senior Cord Ceremony. Today is the NAHS Induction and Senior Cord Ceremony. Next Wednesday is the Student Council NJASC Field Trip to Six Flags. Next Thursday is Senior Prom at Valley Regency, and then today, we had the Festival of the Arts from Blocks 3 to 5 on the patio. Students in the arts and design classes display their work created throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any board members have any questions for Seneca? No, thank you. Hi, Emily.
Hello.
Did your computer fire up?
Yes.
Okay.
Just in time.
Just in time.
The sushi tea dance tickets were sold on sale last week for the Asian American Club's annual dance, which is at 7:00 PM today. Junior Dinner was on the 17th at Hanover Manor. And also on the 17th, the Peer Buddies Club went on a trip to Dave and Buster's for a day of gaming and fun. Cheerleading tryouts were held in the PHS gym on the 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th at 3:15 PM. Senior interns had their last day of school on Friday and have been working their new jobs all week. The PHS Choir Cabaret Concert was held on the 15th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. The students sang a variety of pop and Broadway songs, both individually and as a choir. Last week on the 16th, the Girls Across Team won their last game against Hoboken in a first-score wins overtime. The final shot was taken by senior Eva Teresi, giving her 100 scoring shots on goal for the season. On the 21st, Spanish classes took a trip to New York City to visit the Museum of Natural History and learn about Mesoamerican tribes and empires. The Interact Club held a Dating Violence Awareness Service Night on the 21st. The African-American Cultural Club was selling chocolate today from 9:36 to 9:44 and 11:45 to 12:15 by the security desk in the main hallway. The National Honor Society had a practice after school today, and if you want to support your local liaison, the induction ceremony is on the 30th at 7:00 PM in the PHS auditorium. And the best news, AP exams are over.
Any board members have any questions for Emily? No, seeing none. Thank you, and thank you for those reports. I really appreciate it. I was remiss in welcoming Dr. Mulrooney as our stand-in for Dr. Sutter tonight, so welcome. Many board members have any very technical questions, please feel free to address them to Dr. Mulrooney.
My middle name, technical.
We're gonna suspend the regular meeting. We have a special presentation on the tiers of support through instructional coaching. We have our presenters here, so whenever you're ready.
Can I just say something real quick? Will you ask the instructional coaches to make a presentation? They make a presentation. So, the packet is incredibly thorough, and while they may not speak to everything on the packet, we do encourage you to take a look at it because they don't mess around, and they work really hard, and they're proud of the work that they do, and so are we. So, I'm eager to hear the presentation, guys, so good luck.
On the eve of Memorial Day weekend, let me add that in there. Hi, everyone. My name is Marissa Rosa. I am the elementary supervisor for language arts with my counterpart, Anna Marie Russo, who is our math and science supervisor. But I just wanted to start by introducing the coaches that work directly with me. We have two literacy coaches that work in our 10 elementary schools. So, Allison O'Brien and Courtney Breslauer each work across our 10 elementary schools. They're gonna talk a little bit further in a few minutes, and I'm going to let Anna Marie introduce her coaches.
So, hi, my name is Anna Marie Russo. I am the supervisor of K-35 Math and Science and Row and Basic Skills, as Marissa said. My two coaches are Tara Snellings on the east side of town and Susie Shoals on the west side of town. So, today's presentation is going to be on how the tiers of support are being given through our instructional coaches. The agenda is our math and language arts framework and programming, our roles of the instructional coach within the district, the tiers of support for math, the tiers of support for language arts, and then teacher testimonials.
So, like Dr. Mulrooney said, and some of you might remember, last year Anna Marie and I presented on a whole bunch of data at the elementary level. So, this is slightly different, but the next few slides that we're not going to get too deeply into, I'm gonna go tap it in a few seconds.
I can tap it for you.
No, it's okay, I'll go over there. Yeah, thank you. Our frameworks for both math and language arts. So, those have not changed since we spoke about them last year. Everything has stabilized, but the most important thing to know about that is that these coaches are leading the way in all those instructional areas, and they're going to get into all the conversation about the details of what that looks like for them. So, I'm gonna hand it over to, I believe, Tara first, and we're gonna start with our math coaches.
Good evening. This is our second year having math instructional coaches in the district, and last year, when Susie and I started, we were looking for a way to help define our role to the teachers that we were going to be working with. So, we created this menu of services to show them the different ways that we were going to be available to support them. We told them we were there to be their resource provider, instructional partner, sounding board, learning facilitator, curriculum specialist, and data coach. And tonight, as we talk about some of the activities we've done throughout the schools that we work in, we're hoping that we illustrate how we've served in those different roles.
Good evening. So, Ally and I, this is both of our first year as literacy coaches, so we followed Susie and Tara, and we also made a little menu here to share out with the teachers to introduce ourselves, as well as the roles that we could serve and how we could support them. The roles are similar to what Tara just went through, and we were working throughout the year to support teachers through reading, writing, phonics, and word study.
We're going to be talking about the support that we've offered through math and ELA at different levels, starting with the district level, then moving on to the school levels, the classroom levels, and then the community. And on each slide, we're just going to give you a little bit of a highlight so that we're not here for a very long time, but the main goal, or I should say, the main way that we supported teachers at the district level this year was the rollout of our new math program. So, our new math program, called Envision Math, was one that was chosen by a committee last spring, and last spring Anna Marie, Susie, and I were able to visit some other schools that utilize Envision Math as their program. This was valuable to us because we were able to meet with administrators and teachers in those districts, ask them questions about their experience with the program, and that helped to inform our rollout as we moved forward with the program this year. We ended last school year by doing a presentation in all 10 of the elementary schools, showing the teachers how to navigate the online platform for Savvas, which is the online version of Envision, and showing them some valuable planning resources that they might want to review in preparation for this school year. Then, at the beginning of this school year, we did a refresher and also provided them some guidance with the most important resources to get them going, because they were definitely overwhelmed with all of the resources and components to the program at first. And then, throughout the year, as Susie and I went to each school, we continued to support the teachers each time, highlighting some more components and resources for them to weave into their math instructional block.
So, focusing on the resources, we wanted a place that would be a central location for all the teachers and all the schools and all the different grades to have access to. So, we created the Math Coach Resource Library, and that's on, it's a shared drive, and we just provided all different activities for all of the skills and standards that are covered from all the grades K to 5. And we found that it is such a helpful tool that people continue to revisit.
Good evening. So, at the district level for English Language Arts, one of our main focuses this year was the integration of a new grammar resource called Patterns of Power. And so, at the beginning of the school year, Courtney primarily spoke to kindergarten through second-grade teachers, and I spoke with grades 3 through 5, and we really took a deep dive into this new resource. We looked at the new instructional format that teachers were being asked to try out. We talked to the teachers about the benefits of teaching grammar in this new way. It is not the way we learned grammar. When we learned grammar, grammar was really like an editing or revision tool. You picture like a red pen. Now, grammar is really seen as a crafting tool. It's a way to be creative and a way to become real writers and authors. So, we also talked about what this new instruction might look like in the classroom. Similar to math, the same teachers that are trying to learn the new math program are also being asked to try this new grammar program. So, we thought a digital hub of resources and lessons would be beneficial for them. We created this lesson library where teachers have access to lessons, and they can also create new lessons and share them across the 10 elementary schools and the sixth-grade levels, which was great because it promoted collaboration across the district. Another key focus this year was to provide continued support in word study instruction. In case you don't know, the goal of a word study is to create strong readers and strong writers. So, to continue that support in this area, we focused on best practices, we created new resources, and we also focused on differentiating in the classroom, whole class, small groups, and literacy centers.
Now, on a school level, we initially started holding Lunch and Learns to break down the new math series and introduce it to the teachers the way we would like a new series introduced. I was a classroom teacher for 26 years, and you're 25? 23. And so, we took the new series and we broke it down to introduce it to the teachers in a way that was not overwhelming, and it really helped them to grasp every aspect of it. And so, I truly feel as if the Lunch and Learns and how it was rolled out really contributed to the success of the new series. Once we had introduced the different components of the new series, we then had Lunch and Learns based on topics that the teachers would request. Maybe they wanted help with their mini lesson, or maybe they wanted help with small group instruction, so we molded our Lunch and Learns according to what the teachers needed.
Another way that we provided support at the school level was by working with our Basic Skills Math teachers in each building to apply for a Parsippany Education Foundation grant. This grant was called the Building Blocks of Mathematical Understanding, and our goal was to obtain the funding to buy math stackers, which you can see in the pictures in the bottom right with the students, with those building blocks that have numbers on them. So, essentially, they are blocks with numbers, but they are proportional in size to the value of the number. So, it allows the students to work on composing and decomposing numbers hands-on with those manipulatives. So, you can see the two girls in the picture, they have the number 10 on the one block, and then they showed that next to it, there's a 9 and a 1, and it's the same height, and a 5 and a 5. So, these kits are allowing us to really work hands-on in the primary grades, building mathematical understanding. The kits were $329 each, so for 10 elementary schools, it was $3,290 that we were able to help the BSI teachers obtain, and we have one for each of our 10 schools now.
For ELA, similar to math, we also hosted Lunch and Learns, and we were able to pick topics that we were finding that teachers were really needing the most support with. So, one of the ones that we conducted this year was small group reading instruction. Ally and I attended a conference where we learned a lot of great strategies, we gained a lot of great resources, so this was a good way for us to be able to share that out with the teachers and also target those needs that they were asking us for. And then, another project Ally and I took on this year was creating a monthly newsletter. We called it PD on the Run. We kind of had a running theme this whole school year. You see like the little shoe graphic on all of our pages. So, this PD on the Run, we would pick topics that we were working with teachers on, or it might have been a follow-up to certain things that we have been doing, or just anything that we felt would be great to just pass out to all of the teachers. So, we would send that out each month. It would go out to all of the teachers and principals, and we'd also include links with different resources on there that they could access. So, another quick way for us to just get out some professional development to teachers based on topics that we felt would be most beneficial.
At the classroom and teacher level, we focused on the guided math format, and the guided math format focuses on a mini lesson, and then it's followed with small group instruction, which is then differentiated according to the students' needs. And so, we spent a lot of time taking the whole group instruction model and tailoring it towards the guided math model, which we have found to be much more successful. We are able to meet the students' needs much better.
Another way we support teachers is co-teaching lessons with them. And so, I find them to benefit from this because a lot of people trying something new are looking for that side-by-side support, so we're kind of like their copilot. And this year, when we've been trying something new, it most often has been a component of the math program. So, when I go, I'll say to them, have you tried out the Let's Investigate yet? If you haven't, when I come in on Thursday, why don't we try the Let's Investigate for that topic? Or the guided problem-solving reading mats that we have, but also, the co-teaching sometimes involves something that I've recently learned. So, if I was on a training for Desmos at the elementary level, when I go to visit the school, I'll say to the teacher, when I come in, can we try this activity that I just learned about on Desmos? It's something I really think that you could use in small group on your own when I'm not here, but let's try it together. So, I think it takes a little bit of the intimidation out of them because we're doing it together, and I also can bring some insight. Maybe I've experienced another building with a different teacher that has tried it, and I'll say, oh, this worked for that teacher, why don't we try it this way? And it's beneficial to me, but also to them.
So, I begged Courtney to be able to do this slide. Truthfully, though, this is where all of the support we've given teachers at the district level and the school level come together. This is really, the classroom teacher level is the heart of our work, and as instructional coaches is where we spend the vast majority of our time. If you think back to those initial menus where we had the road and the sneakers, it's where we get to put on those hats or sneakers and really act in many different ways alongside our teachers. So, we meet with teachers in coaching cycles, and then we choose goals, they choose goals for themselves, and then we work side-by-side, and that might look like planning units, planning lessons, demonstrating lessons, co-teaching lessons, helping, looking at small groups. A lot of times, we are looking at students' strengths and identifying our next steps to help meet students where they are and move them forward. A lot of times, teachers just need resources, and sometimes we find them, and sometimes we create them, and we share them out across the 10 schools. Whether it is a first-year teacher or a year 25 teacher, when we are able to meet teachers and support them in meaningful ways, the teachers grow. And when the teachers grow, the students grow.
And the final is the community level, and throughout the year, we had three parent math academies. And we had the first one in October, and that was an overview of the math program, and it was a really great opportunity to explain to the parents why we did change to a new math program, just the theories behind the new program, and a little bit of a dissection about the program, so this way, when the work comes home, they have a better understanding of the driving force behind it. We found that having that initial meeting was super helpful. We had over 300, we had over 300 parents attend, so it was just a wonderful opportunity for all of us.
They didn't want to leave.
True. You had to keep saying, thank you, everybody, for coming. The second one was held in January, and that was more about fact fluency and how to help your child at home using everyday objects around the house. And so, we were explaining to parents that you don't have to have necessarily math manipulatives. You can use all of the things that you have at home and make math fun. And then, finally, we just had one, May 16th, on problem solving, and it was great because our focus was taking the fear out of problem solving and helping people understand that there are many different strategies to solve it. So, it was a really great opportunity to extend ourselves to the community and work together to achieve a common goal.
So, we find in general that our parents are always looking for ways to support their children at home with math, but in particular, this year, because we had a new math program, they were looking for a little bit more guidance. So, at Back to School Night and parent-teacher conferences, we created as coaches some flyers that teachers could share out with parents with some information that they would find helpful, we hoped. The flyer that was shared out at Back to School Night was information about the Family Engagement Portal, which is part of the Savvas/Envision platform, and it provides lesson-level support for the parents, which I think they're finding invaluable because the lesson video that the teacher can use during class is then linked on this Family Engagement Portal, and the parents can see at home exactly how it was presented to the child in class. There's also activities that they can do at home for extra practice with their children, and it also provides them a worked example of some of the problems that their students have done in class to give them an understanding of what's expected on the homework. And then, at parent-teacher conferences, we were looking to reiterate that Family Engagement Portal was available. At parent-teacher conferences, a lot of times, parents are voicing concerns with how their students are doing in different subject areas, so we thought this was a good opportunity to remind them that resource was available. And then, also to share with them the Success Maker Program that was a partner program for Envision this year. It's an online individualized adaptive learning program that they can use at home, but we're also using in school, and we're finding it to be super helpful because it not only helps students that need intervention, but it also is helping the kids that are on level with a spiral review of skills throughout the year. Teachers commented that this was super helpful with test preparation because the students have been spiraling the content throughout, and it also provides enrichment opportunities for students that have been identified by the program as in need of intervention or enrichment specifically to different skills.
We were able to host two parent literacy nights this year. Ally and I collaborated with Marissa, the reading specialist, media specialist, to put on a really great night with informational sessions. There was nine different sessions on various skills and geared towards K-2 and 3.5. So, parents were able to pick sessions that they felt would most benefit either themselves at home to help their child or to better understand what their child is doing in school. Ally and I were both able to present. We collaborated with different reading specialists in the district. Ally presented on vocabulary, building vocabulary for geared towards grades 3, 5. I presented on blending strategies geared towards students in K-2. Both the parent academies and the parent literacy nights were really great way for us coaches to connect what's happening in school with what's happening at home. So, if that doesn't give you enough about how amazing, amazing, amazing these coaches are, they pulled together some teacher testimonials, and this speaks volumes for the support they provide to our teachers in our 10 schools. But I also wanted to note that Anna Marie and I have the opportunity to be present at many of the teacher evaluations, their summative evaluations at the end of the year, and candidly, teachers just will constantly say, oh, my gosh, the coach helped me with this, I love the way the coach helped me with that. And the teachers are just so happy to have a partner, like the coaches described it, a partner in just confirming that they're doing the right thing or answering questions about something they might be unsure about. And for us, I know I speak for Anna Marie too, their eyes and ears are everywhere, and they can come back to us and talk to us about, hey, this is a trend we're noticing going on, we need to fix this, or this is going well, let's keep going with this. And it's so helpful to us as administrators to get a pulse on what's happening in both language arts and math, which is huge in 10 elementary schools. So, thank you so much for listening to us tonight. Thank you so much for being here and sharing in our presentation, and thank you guys for doing this, because you're amazing. They're the best.
I'm sure there may be some board members with questions, so I'll open it up to the floor, Mrs. Mayer.
I was amazed at what you all do, so I thank you for working with our teachers because as a former teacher, it was always good to have somebody to kind of fall back on for help. But I do have just a few questions. When you went to the other districts that were using the Envision Math Program, did they use instructional coaches as well, or you didn't ask that? I'm just curious.
I think there was one district that used instructional coaches and one that didn't, and the one district that did share, they said that it was instrumental to actually have the coaches and the administrator be a part of the implementation. They found that if they brought in outside vendors, it was a bit, it was more difficult to gather all of the information that a teacher would need to start the school year. So, yes, it was one of the districts out of the two that we visited.
Another question. This was the first year for this math program.
Correct.
And I know how hard it is when you get a new math program and you gotta go hit the ground with it, so I'm sure that having that time to kind of own it was important. Next year, it's not the first year in the world, what are you going to do? Are you going to do a refresher? I'm really thinking math because I was a basic skills math teacher. So, what are you going to do with that? Are you going to have, you know, you've already introduced it to the teachers that are using it, how will you use your resources?
Yep.
The series is wonderful. Can I actually just digress for a second? That I worked with Judy Mayer when I first got hired in 98, and she was on my grade level. So, if we're gonna talk about support, this is someone that I got support from in the very beginning. the very beginning. But I digress, so I'm sorry. But there is so much to this math series and I'm thrilled to be a math coach, but I was a fifth-grade teacher forever and I'm really sorry that I didn't have the opportunity to use this series as a second or fifth-grade teacher because there's so much. And we presented everything, but there is absolutely no way you could integrate every single aspect of this series. There's no way. Just learning the format and just learning how to take the mini lesson and the small group instruction, we were telling them, let's say there's 20 resources to use, right? We were saying, "Get your mini lesson, get your small group instruction, pick one. Good, you know, you got the hang of that? Great, adapt, you know, get another one. Great, you got that?" So, there are still so many more resources out there that we have not helped them to implement yet because it would be an unbelievable task to say, "Here you go, here's 20 of them, good luck." So, I think it's just like a scaffold day.
I think also, we touched upon it lightly on one of the slides, but this year, Suzie and I were primarily working with the teachers in K1 and 2 and the literacy coaches were focusing more with grades 3, 4, 5 and last year it was the opposite. So, the teachers in grades 3, 4, and 5, although they've received our support through the Lunch and Learns and just the collegial support we provide when we're in the building, when we're not meeting with the K2 teachers, next year, we will actually be meeting with them every week when we go to their school and going in and doing the co-teaching and planning with the 3 to 5 teachers. This year, 3 to 5 was working mostly with the literacy coaches. We didn't want to come at them from both sides. In addition, I just want to add that in our end-of-year summative meetings with teachers, a lot of them brought up that they want to continue as their professional development plan with Envision Math. But along with that, our focus next year for literacy and math is small group instruction and the interventions that are being provided in the what I need period, the WIN or RTI intervention period. So, we're going to take and put all of our brains together and use all of the programming that we have and see what resources can be provided for the intervention periods. So, it'll be a little bit of everything.
I do have a couple more questions.
Sure, you're getting all these accolades and, you know, thanks for people so much. Go ahead.
I had to talk to her beforehand. Your basic skills and your reading specialist, how, do you work with them? I mean, how do they, you do the whole classroom with the teacher, right? So, how do you work with the basic skills teacher or the remedial, the reading?
It depends. Just as every teacher is on their different path of teaching, it really depends on what the teacher is asking us for. So, we didn't go in with a set mini lesson. So, if a teacher asks for support with struggling students, I might go talk to the reading specialist. If a teacher asked about small group instruction, struggling students, I might, we might talk about ways and strengths that we see that students have and then areas that they need support in. And then we might set up lessons or small groups during their ELA block that would support those needs. So, we had, we were always having conversations with media specialists and reading specialists, but really, we were able to help the teachers with what they asked us for. I only had a couple opportunities this year to really help with specific students. Our focus this year was more on instruction and planning and modeling, but, you know, we do it all, so if they ask for it, we'd be willing to.
Is math, basic skills math, is that still push-in? Is that a still, they come into the classroom?
Basic skills math is a pull-out program.
Oh, it's pull-out again, now it's pull-out?
Yep. So, right before I was...
Then it was push-in, now it's pull-out again, right?
So, immediately before becoming a math coach, last year, I was a basic skills math teacher for three years at Knollwood. And just as we're kind of the point people for Marissa and Anna Marie, I'm finding for Suzie and I, the basic skills math teachers are our point people in the buildings. We're only, we're each at five schools. So, we are on a week, like a five-week cycle. So, I'll be at Knollwood one week, then the next week, I'm at Rockaway Meadow, then the next week, Lake Hiawatha, then Northville, then Troy Hills. So, potentially, it's five weeks in between when I'm back at a building. I'm having lots of communication with teachers via email, texting, but ultimately, it's the BSI teacher that will sometimes send me an email and say, "I'm noticing that this is coming up as a concern of teachers, when you come back, if you would bring some resources to help them out with this." They're kind of our point people. There also are collaborators. So, when we're in the buildings, a lot of times, the Lunch and Learns that we are offering, we're offering in collaboration with the BSI teacher. So, the ones that we offered related to the Success Maker Program and reading the data and using it to inform our instruction, that was one that we did in tandem with the basic skills math teacher in each building. We were able to bring a more global perspective, having more experience to play around with the program, but they were able to tell us what the needs of their specific building were in terms of the data they needed to pull from that.
In addition to the reading specialist and the basic skills math, we're also in constant communication with the building principals, right? So, it's kind of like a triangle between us all, what are you noticing, what do you see, what do you need? And so, it changes from the fall to the winter to the spring as the children's needs change as well.
My last question, I promise.
The last question was your last question or you have one more? You have one more?
No, this is coming up. You had your meetings, the math had three meetings and, you know, reading. Now, next year, are you going to have the same meetings, just maybe change the topics, but keep parents very much involved? Because you're gonna, you start at grade one?
So, the parent math academies and the literacy nights were all for K5 parents.
Okay. So, you're going to have new parents coming in, so they're going to be at the overview issue. Okay, so, but you're still going to be working with parents to keep them in the loop?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I love your program. I wish it was, in effect, when I was teaching, it sounds great to have that support.
Thank you, Judy. Any other questions? Michelle?
So, the tools and resources that you have found in our facilitating are incredible. I thank you so much for doing this. I know it takes a lot of effort, but it clearly is making a difference for our teachers, our students, and our community, so thank you. Just wondering about the Lunch and Learns. So, you're giving our teachers so many different resources in order to learn how to use these tools. Were the Lunch and Learns something that were mandated or is it something optional? They were optional. And so, they were optional. How many teachers took you up on the opportunity to sit in on those Lunch and Learns? I'd be surprised.
Again, we would visit a school. So, I'm on the west side, so I would have Eastlake, Intervale, Lake Par. So, let's say I was at Eastlake. I would send, you know, an email out to the teachers and I would say, "I will be with you during the weeks of. Is there anything in particular you would like me to talk about or I have these topics that I can present to you?" And then people that are interested, which ended up being everybody because it was a new series and they appreciated our take on it and how we could convey it, they attended and it was so great. And then we could say, "Here, these are my thoughts on the mini lesson. This is how I would teach it. I can come model it for you. I'm going to be gone in other schools for five weeks. You let me know how it goes and then we'll catch up again when I'm back." And it was a constant, "How did it go? Great. What were the pros? What were the cons? What can we work on? Go to the next school, same thing. Try this. How did it work? Pros and cons." And it was a constant learning cycle wherever we went.
I will say too, it wasn't every time we went to a building that we did a Lunch and Learn. So, we weren't overwhelming them with sessions. A lot of our turnkey training was done in one-on-one sessions or sessions with a grade level during their prep and planning periods. So, we weren't monopolizing their lunchtimes with these sessions. But when we did offer them, they knew it was useful information and like Suzie said, pretty much everyone attended.
And I think because it was a new series and that was different.
And then in addition, Marissa and I have the supervisor meetings after school. So, if they did not attend the Lunch and Learns, they had the opportunity from our supervisor menu. And in that menu, we have math, literacy, science, SCL, health, social studies. So, they have the opportunity to watch or view a session, but additionally apply what they learned during that Lunch and Learn.
Thank you very much.
Wendy?
I was just, hey, thank you. This is great work and, you know, teachers, leading teachers is fantastic and exactly what the profession needs and I'm so like thankful to be in a district that values your labor. I was thinking about different like models of assessment and like what, how do you know this is working? And I was thinking, we might think about things like teacher satisfaction or teacher self-efficacy or like things like program fidelity or even down the line, like test scores. I was wondering what, just what you're thinking about assessing your own effectiveness and like what the timeframes might look like in that and if you're doing it formally or informally, what that might, what that's looking like to you.
We start, Marissa? We started off the beginning of the school year. One, I'm new to the district this year and I'm a new coach, so it was a new year for me. And I would like to say, I can tell, I can say that I enjoy my job and I don't think that all of my friends can say that. So, when you say, "Thank you," thank you. It's really an honor to be up here working with the teachers in the district. So, at the beginning of the year, we sent out a survey based off of the district goals and the needs that our supervisors sold us, they're looking to support teachers with. But we asked teachers, "What do you need help with?" And then we spent the rest of the year designing professional development, Lunch and Learns, one-on-one coaching sessions with those teachers. And at the end of the year, we sent out another, an evaluation, if you will. What were the topics? It was, "Were we friendly and approachable? Were we helpful? Did..." Were they useful?
Useful and meeting the needs that you had...
Set out for, yeah. Are there any?
Customer satisfaction. And it was anonymous.
It was anonymous.
You watched them do it, right?
Actually, I was watching them come in, but that's where the teacher testimonials came from. There was a slot at the bottom where they could write in, you know, if there's any feedback you'd like to give us, especially on my first year, that's where these came from.
As a former literacy coach in a previous district, the number one thing that a coach can do, I think that's most beneficial, is build a relationship with the teachers they're with, build that trust, start with that framework. Nobody does it better than these guys. And when Anna Marie and I are having conversations with teachers and they hear, you know, the rumor about a cut that might be coming or a change, immediately, they're saying things to us, which is an awesome assessment. You're not getting rid of the coaches, right? Because they find such value in the work that these four individuals do. And I truly mean that. And for Anna Marie and I, we find so much value because they are the eyes and ears. We cannot be in 10 buildings, it's two of us sort of doing a lot, doing most of the elementary instructional support and they do it for us so well. So, as a kind of candid evaluation of their work, teachers are constantly begging us for more with them. They can only divide themselves so much, they're each in five schools and they are working day and night, texting us all hours of the evening with their amazing ideas. So, that in itself speaks volumes, so, you know, we just love them.
Truthful but funny. So, it's my first year in the district and I don't, I'm learning about our district. So, teachers that are new and not new would ask me questions and I would say, "Ask me anything, I'll just ask because I don't know anything about this district yet." So, we have teachers who have been here for many years on shore or just verifying that they're doing the right thing and I'd say, "Just let me ask," you know? So, it's that trust and that relationship that I think really makes this work.
Any other questions? Chithol, sure.
Thank you. And just to echo everyone else's sentiment, you guys were wonderful. Thank you so much for putting this much effort. I was able to attend the parent literacy night, so I wanted to...
Thank you.
Just as a parent, but it was really helpful and I love the fact that you had these QR codes so that we can go back and visit other ones that we were not able to participate in, so I just wanted to, you know, let them know that, I appreciated that. And I just wanted to...
Thank you, Canva. Because if you haven't used Canva, a shout-out to Canva, it's amazing. Get yourself on there and give it a try and it's free to educators, which is even more amazing. We get the really cool features of it.
I hope that you'll be able to, I know you only did this in March, but is there any plans to do it more than once a year or is that a tremendous task to ask for?
Yes and yes. Yeah, I mean, we of course need to change things every year, figure out what our parent community needs, but certainly, we've had lots of brainstorm both before and after about what it might look like. Do we do it more at a school level? Do we involve it in some of our family reading nights that happen at our school levels versus, you know, versus the district level? I think sometimes, parents get a little intimidated by going to a larger event beyond their school level, especially when it comes to literacy. Math, I think, being new was more well-attended. Anna Marie won that one unfortunately. But yes, I mean, there's always opportunity to find great ways to involve the parents.
The individual classrooms were very intimate and you could ask and if you're shy about asking, it was, you know, there was very, it wasn't like there was less people, but it was enough of a...
It was just cozy. It was nice and cozy.
The other question I had for you guys was, I saw all the wonderful testimonials that are here, but was there any challenging feedback that you guys got back?
They want more of them.
I have one. So, I work with a lot of resource teachers as well and I do not have a resource background. So, for our special education students, I'm constantly talking to the other coaches and to other teachers on how to best support the needs of those teachers. And I asked if we could also have a special education coach and I was told no. So, I will continue to learn myself, but it's an ongoing process. That was, I think, my biggest feedback, was that the special education teachers valued my efforts and our relationship, but the resources I was giving them didn't necessarily fit into their hole, right? So, then they had to take it and tweak it, but that's what teachers do. So, going into next year, I will probably tweak my instruction a little bit.
I think one of the challenges that Suzie and I faced this year was at the beginning of the year, we were tech support. With the new math program and a new platform and getting students on the new platform and teachers on the platform and helping students and teachers navigate the platform, we had to train ourselves very quickly and become experts on navigating the Savis site, which we didn't originally, I guess, envision having to do. But that was a challenge and I think we like, we rose to the challenge. We did.
Any other questions? Yes, Suzie, please.
Hi. Like everyone else, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for the presentation, for all you do. It's important for us as a district, not only to support our students, but also the staff because, you know, you guys get out, like you were saying, you go to, you know, different classes and you learn and you bring and that in itself is a tremendous help because the teachers themselves can't do that. So, it's always, it's always important to learn some, you know, to bring in the new stuff, what is, you know, what's out there, you know, to find out and not become stagnant. So, keep on it with Dr. Mulrooney if you need more people, you know? I have the two people right here. This is the person, this is the person that can okay.
For the next 45 minutes.
But no, but thank you and, you know, and in fact, you know, that is, this, these are the type of programs that we have to support to help you, to help our students and the rest of the staff. So, thank you so much. And if you ever have a problem-solving learning class, invite me, please, because I went...
There's a lot of problems to be solved.
It's a problem, okay? I don't know how I got straight A's in math in school because math problems were not my best, the strong suit, thank you.
Judy, do you have one more thing?
One more thing. I remember when we switched to GoMath and it was at the end of the summer when we got it and teachers, the biggest criticism that was throughout our schools was, "We didn't have enough time to get to know what it was." So, I just remember everybody frantically trying to catch up, so I can see the value in your help at the beginning.
Well, thanks. Lots of great ideas die, they never make it anywhere and for whatever the reason. So, I love the fact that you guys developed a great program, you thought about how to roll it out, you got people, your audience, to buy what you were selling, and they've got this critical mass who really embraced it. So, I think it's going to be a fantastic program, it's only going to continue to grow. So, thank you so much for this, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a nice weekend, yeah. So, we're going to move on. Is there any... So we're going to move on. Is there any correspondents to come before the board?
No.
No? No, okay, good. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing none. No. Okay. Committee reports. And it seems like there's a lot of them tonight. So why don't we, why don't we, if you have a committee and a liaison, why don't you do both at the same time? Sure, we're not going around the table multiple times. So we'll start with Dr. Wright. But I don't, I think he might be the only person with that, I believe.
I'm all good. Thank you.
Michelle.
So on the 21st of this week, the Human Resources and Labor Relations Committee met. President were myself, Suzie Holder, Judy Mayer, Todd Ricker, and Bob Sutter. There were really two concentrations of topics that we spoke about. There were some personnel matters that were confidential in nature that we worked our way through. Mr. Ricker was very well-versed on all the information that we needed, so we were able to make the decisions that were necessary. The second topic was around the job descriptions, which you have in your packets tonight. So there are four that you should, that were reviewed and are there for approval. The health benefits coordinator, the director of early childhood, the director of school security, and the school security officer. That is my report. Any questions?
Do you want to briefly mention the meeting with the town yesterday? Just maybe very top level?
Sure.
Wait, wait, wait. Let's not get past this just real quick.
Oh, you have questions?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Suzie.
I just want to make sure that the board knows that, for example, on a couple, it's not that it's a new position and in addition to, but it's a name change on a couple of them.
Right. Some revisions to the duties and the name.
Yes, so that the public, if they're listening, it's not that we're hiring more people. It's a name change of a couple of positions already.
That's right. Yeah, thanks for making that point. Any, I'm sorry, any questions for Michelle on the HR report? No, okay, thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. So last night, we met, so President Chaffo, Vice President Holder, and myself met with the township and the mayor to discuss the different, to continue the discussions we've been having around the pilots and the profit sharing, as well as other things that we could be collaborating on. It continues to be a very positive collaboration and partnership with them. We walked away from that meeting with some clear follow-ups and the intention to meet again very soon so that we can start to make some progress on some of the things that we've been discussing. Is that fair?
That's fair. Thank you. Any questions for Michelle on that? No. Okay, thank you. Chithul, communications, a very, very robust report. And I have questions too on it.
All right, let's go. So thank you. Communications met on May 13th. Present were myself, Mr. Rea, Dr. Wright, and Mr. Barrios. And as President Chaffo said, it was very comprehensive. And I love having these meetings because sometimes it looks like we might not have much of an agenda until we sit down and then things just start flowing out. So the first thing we discussed was scheduling additional podcast recordings. And there was quite a few bullet points about that. The Q and A inaugural podcast was really great. It was very informative, discussed some additional podcast topics, such as committees, such as TLC, on how books and curriculum are chosen, created, and also how policies are reviewed and updated in our committees. We talked about rotating other board members and administration for future podcasts. Also about proposing new content for additional podcasts, especially in the summer months. Ramp up for back-to-school with a podcast with additional insight from Dr. Sutter on how the district and the administration prepare for a new school year. Some of the topics that would be up for back-to-school would be transportation schedules, teacher assignments, and new teachers, something called snippets, a day in the life at Eastlake School, for example, going into the schools and giving an idea of their day, their real-life tasks, and how to incorporate that into a podcast. We also spoke about in the same realm of who do we imagine in these podcasts and what kind of information do we want to convey about our schools. An intro to kindergarten was also suggested for families that are brand-new to this district, and an intro to crossing guards. In addition to that, we spoke about HIBs from middle school and up for parents to understand the HIB process, the legal side, terms, et cetera. Spoke about a high school prom video and coordination, an avenue for discussing pilots, including Q and A, displaying transparency to our community, and making sure that it's on the radar for our district parents. We also spoke about Littleton construction phases and updates and progress. And I'm really sad that Bob is not here because I wanted to call him Bob the Builder, which is what we were discussing. Inviting the student reps to the committee meetings like they used to in years past. The second topic that we discussed was developing topics for upcoming meetings. Mr. Barrios had mentioned that something called Board Bites used to be a part of, one of the topics that used to be part of our meetings. A synopsis of the public meeting by just the board, by a separate PR person or students. An example of that would be students at the PAL discussing or sharing updates. Collating a list of all the district's social media pages and sites into one place so that you can find games, activities, concerts, the calendar updates, et cetera. Demographer updates were also discussed for upcoming meetings. Architect updates, such as can the ad hoc and building grounds committees look at the architect updates and send a rough draft to the board? Also with building grounds, can the five-year plan for facilities be discussed in the future? And retirement incentives, like they do at some colleges, to keep staffing levels up. The third topic we talked about was updates on the previous meetings. We had talked about making an updated statement or a press release on the state of the union of our district, especially regarding the redevelopments. And from the ad hoc and communications to the general public about the board and district, or both, to make sure that they understand that our district nor the BOE are dropping the ball on anything. And it has been a while since the public has heard from us, so that was why that was suggested. Hoping that there are also no delays before we see something such as revenue sharing and not scraps, since a lot of items are reliant on revenue sharing, such as, but not limited to, Littleton projects, structural impacts, and personnel. And there are a lot of possibilities that would also benefit the mayor and the council that should be discussed without additional burden or cost to the taxpayers. And last but not least, we did speak about the Canva chart that Dr. Wright had helped put together. And the questions surrounding that was, can the printouts of the original Canva chart and the key numbers and funding our school district be made available for the table for people to take home with them as they enter or leave the public meeting? Mr. Barrios had also had this same chart blown up into a poster size with the intention to display it on an A-frame at the board office during the public meetings for our community. And the questions were, when can it be displayed? And if there is any issue with that, what parameters do we need before this can happen? Is there any reason that it cannot be displayed? Why or why not? And is there any hesitation or controversy due to the fear that Mayor Barberio would be upset or mad by the data on the chart? Why or why not? And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Suzie?
With, I mean, these are excellent, excellent topics. Kudos to you guys. It really was, seems to have been an excellent meeting. I guess, my question is, the Canva chart, I thought that we had already agreed to that. I mean, why, that we were going to display it. And because it just shows numbers. It has nothing, you know, it's, it's on our website. So it's not like we're, and if we already have the poster, where is the poster?
I believe it's in Dr. Sutter's office. So just, I'd like to see affirmatively, do we want to, because I guess it would be put like right back here during our public board meetings.
In the, as we come in?
No, because I think they want it on, I want, they want it on camera.
Oh, they want it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah? All in favor?
Yeah.
Robin, perhaps you can mention to Dr. Sutter that at the next meeting, we'll have our chart up at the board. Yeah, Judy?
Regarding the snippets, I found that interesting because years ago, I did, when I was president of the union, we did a day in the life of the teacher. And we went around at all the different schools and focused on the teacher and what they did. And it was really a great example to put out there. And unfortunately, that page has long since been lost.
I know.
But it was, it took a whole, it took, I think, two days to do it, but it was well worth it. It was a great activity for the teachers to see them, and for them to see the whole thing.
So when you say snippets, are you referring back to the Board Bites?
Well, it's a day in the life at Eastlake.
Okay. You don't recall Board Bites either?
I don't recall them.
Board Bites was a topic coming out of school boards that we, the board, at one time, were looking at putting in post-board meeting that would do a selective highlight that would be either emailed or sent out to our community so they wouldn't have to go to the website. And I think at the time, there was an issue with, you know, who was going to do it. It would be the board's responsibility. Back then, we had asked about getting a student, maybe almost like an internship to the board. I talked a little bit when I was board president with Dr. Sargent about it. She didn't object to it, but we just never got around to it. And I brought it up in getting communications because I just think it's a way of not only talking about what happens at our meetings and some of the, on the positives, but, you know, we've got a lot of talented kids out there that especially are technology savvy. If you remember, I think it was either last year or two years ago, Dr. Sargent started engaging some of our students, helping her with her PowerPoint presentations. So I just thought it was an extension of doing that. And it was a kind of a giving back a little bit to the community, since many, many years, our board goals is to enhance communications to our community.
That sounds good.
I'll certainly bring it up with Dr. Sutter and see if he has any ideas. And perhaps Dr. Mulrooney, being, if we want to have our students involved with presenting that kind of material. We'll see how we can get it done. Any other questions? Could you speak in the microphone?
I was saying that the student reps used to be part of the committee meetings in the past. I noticed that they were in the photos before, but I don't know if they were always in the committee meetings. But I thought that was.
Historically, we had students attend committee meetings, not necessarily the more confidential meetings, but like, you know, there were selective meetings in which the board represent, our student reps were invited to because technically, they are a part of our board, even though they represent the students. But, you know, I think that, and Dr. Sargent and I talked about that last year, I believe, was to enhance their role like they used to do. Because really, I don't know, and I love these students, so it has nothing to do with the students. But if they have to come in, give a five-minute report and then leave, you know, I'm not sure if we're helping them in their educational process and government and boards and what it is they're looking for. I think that that's something that we've done in the past. I'd like to talk about resurrecting it for the future.
Again, I don't recall it ever happening. Having students in committees, I never, don't recall that at all.
Wasn't Anthony Mancuso's son involved?
I don't.
I mean, we're talking years ago.
Yeah, no, it was definitely.
He was a liaison to the board, yeah, but I don't, I don't recall.
But I mean, again, it's, the point being was is that in 2023, I believe it was, when Dr. Sargent and I discussed it, it was to enhance, you know, it was something that we didn't, it wasn't reinventing the wheel. We had done it before. We don't know, we couldn't figure out why we hadn't done it, why we stopped doing it. But nobody thought it was a bad idea. You know, obviously, there were certain committees that they couldn't go to. And, you know, if we had a committee meeting and they couldn't go to it, you know, obviously, I'm like a board member, we can't hold them responsible for committee meetings. But we just thought that it was an enhancement to their experiences to representing their community.
Their leadership.
They're sitting on, they're sitting at the board table.
So you're suggesting the two people who are liaisons from the high schools attend these committees?
Right.
That's how, that's, because how would you select who goes to a committee?
No, it would be those who are representatives.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, now, again, maybe at this point in time, it would have to be, if this was something to do, it would have to be a 2024, 25 initiative.
Interesting. I must have forgot a whole bunch of stuff over the years. I don't remember that at all.
I vaguely do remember, you know, them taking a more hands-on approach.
Okay. Please, Dennis.
I think that's something you'd have, you'd definitely want to advertise to students before they run for those positions.
Yes, yeah.
Because it becomes a larger commitment. And as students are participating in sports or plays, you might even want to think about multiple students for the job.
Yeah, I'm not sure why the liaison, the student liaisons are in the group photos anymore. That's a good question. That I do remember.
Yes.
Yeah, so regarding the podcasts, I'll reach out to Dr. Sutter. As I was reminded by Mr. Satch tonight, we had one. It was, I think, well-done. We have a lot of material for future podcasts, so we just need to have, because this is a superintendent's podcast, we need to have Bob select the topics he wants to tackle next. And perhaps we pick a day and film three or four at the same time, so we have a library of material to send out. You had, Chithul, on here, demographer updates. Robin, is there any update about the demographer study? Are they working on it? Do we have any update on timeline?
Yeah, so I did email the demographer to find out what the timeline was. He was working on our report. He was gathering information. He had reached out to some contacts in Persepani to get information. And that's where we are right now. So he is in the middle of working on it.
Okay, thank you. So on number three, updated statement press release on the state of the union of the district, especially regarding redevelopments. Does the committee recommend that go out as a podcast or in some other way? What's the other way?
I mean, you could always come up with a statement to put out or a press release like we have done in the past. It's just been a while since we've had any updates for the public, in case, we want to keep it in the forefront of their minds. And, you know, at the end of the year, it's very busy and there's a lot of things going on. So it's not in the forefront of the parents and community at the time.
Okay.
During graduation season and whatnot. So just something that spoke about, you know, we're open to all kinds of suggestions. It doesn't necessarily have to be a press release or a podcast. It could be any kind of communication back. That would be, you know, more than welcome to have all kinds of suggestions to the ad hoc and communications committee on how to go forth with it.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Any liaison report?
No.
No, okay. Timothy? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to briefly mention that the Persepani Education Foundation had their golf outing last week. And I'll let Mr. Chaffo next, continue on that.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Persepani Town Council meeting on May 21st. The basic, there was a series of topics, but mostly centered around the township budget, communications, excuse me, a lot of the conversation, that was the bulk of the conversation, other than, I can let you know that the property behind Atlantadex, that's behind Eastlake School, what, they got its second approval. So it's progressing forward. Again, still no, still no idea if it's going to be a pilot or not pilot. It still has not been brought up, but it has moved forward. As relates to the report on the township budget, it's going to be just a little bit north of 3% increase. It has made, it has gone through this, I guess, you call it their second read or second vote. So it's progressing to the next meeting. A lot of back and forth, a lot of conversations about the budget and where they can trim, you know. So that was not a, the recommendations that were, again, made by one of the councilmen was rejected in a vote of three to two.
was rejected in a vote of three to two. So the current budget as it stands is moving forward. I would, for those board members who did not have the chance to see the video, I don't know if she's available yet, but there was a item brought up, and honestly, anybody who knows, one of our fellow citizens, Mr. Clarkin, who attends a lot of the township council meetings, I don't think I've ever necessarily seen him at a board meeting, but the council made mention, as many of the folks attended and voiced their concerns about the current municipal budget increase, that the council, council president, be more precisely, suggested that the citizenry should go home, review their tax bill, and then go visit the Board of Education and talk to them about why their tax bill's so high. Mr. Clarkin, to his credit, stood up for the Board of Ed and said, you know, hey, Board of Ed has only raised their budget 6% over the last three years. The municipal budget has risen by 21-plus percent in the same three-year period. So although I agree with the idea of the number, I did call our business administrator, Mr. Desko, and said, can you remind me? And she did, and thank you very much. In 2022, the district raised our budget by 2%. 2023, the district raised the budget by 2%. And this year's past budget was raised by 3.18%, which is a total of 7.18%. So I want to make sure the board was aware of that. On the new course with our, our friends at Town Council, just on a personal note, I found that very disheartening to hear that we would do that, but we did. So the board needs to be made aware of it. I hope some of the folks who attended that council meeting do come to our board meeting and ask questions because this team here is never shy to answer a question. And they work very hard. And so anyways, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Tim? No? Yeah, I, I did listen to the recording and, you know, I'm always underwhelmed when we take shots at each other, either, either us at the council or mayor or vice versa. I, I do believe we're going to accomplish more for the residents of this community by working together. And I, you know, being, I'm no even, naive and too trusting, as I hear all too often, I, I am hopeful that the recent discussions with the mayor and some members of the council will continue on, on a positive trajectory. I, I think we are seeing that so far. And, you know, the council president, as we all are, are free basically to say what they'd like when they're at the dais. I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I think, you know, pointing fingers and casting dispersions isn't the right thing to do. We all have our own set, unique set of challenges, yeah. And we're, we're hiring administrators, professionals to run the district. We're being elected with the trust and faith of the community to do the right thing by the community. And, and I, and I hope it doesn't devolve again into a war of words. I'm, I'm not looking forward to that. I'm looking. As I always say, the, the windshield is bigger than the rearview mirror, right, Robin? Because we want to look forward and not backwards. And that's, that's where I'm looking. So I remain hopeful. Allison, I hope you talk about the delegate assembly because it seemed like it was very interesting.
Well, it was, and school boards had a good write-up on it. So I would encourage all the board members to read their write-up. The only real surprise was that the, one of the resolutions passed that was not suggested by the subcommittee, and that was to have school boards mandate, advocate for mandating kindergarten. So that was a little bit of a surprise because usually, school board members are not in favor of asking for unfunded mandates. But other than that, you know, all of the other resolutions passed as suggested.
Allison, we just had a little difficulty hearing what you had said. Can you, can you go back to the thing you were disappointed about, the unfold kindergarten?
There, there was one resolution that did, that was passed that asked the state school board, based, uh, state association to mandate, that they're, they're charged now to ask for mandated kindergarten. So that is obviously an unfunded mandate, which usually, the majority of school boards are not for. But this passed, so now, the school boards association will be charged with, you know, asking the state legislature to mandate kindergarten.
And I think they amended that, that motion, right? They took out the word "full." And didn't they also put in language that it had to be funded? Or am I, am I incorrect?
They did. They took out "full" and they asked for it to be funded, but nobody in the room made any pretense that, that would actually happen.
Thank you. Please, please continue.
I'm sorry, what?
Please continue with your report.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Wasn't, wasn't there another resolution that failed that would mandate a 2% cap on, other than public schools, that are sent students by public school districts?
For special education?
Yes.
Out-of-district schools?
Yes.
Yes, there is already a cap on those schools. So it did not pass because there's already language in there that those schools are already under different caps. So essentially, that would have been a cap on a cap, which shouldn't be necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Allison on the delegate report? Judy?
It's not really a question, but we were emailed a copy of the delegates' assembly and all of the information, which ones passed and, you know, which ones didn't. They talked about mandatory.
Can you use your microphone? Judy, can you use your microphone?
Sorry, my voice usually is pretty strong. Let me just look that up quick. Capital reserve accounts, school cancellations, you know, when you can use for, you know, go online, use of AI, use of schools as polling places, which I thought was really interesting. They believe the determination as to whether to close a public school building used as a polling place on an election day should be made by the local Board of Education. And that's not how it is. So I think, you know, we all got this. Just click on it, and it'll give you a summary of each one.
Allison, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chaffo. I met with the PAL board on May 16th. And just a couple of bullet points. One of the things they covered was they've got roof damage, water damage from, on the roof, and they're working on fixing that. And they're getting a couple of potential free work done by a couple of construction companies. There are a couple of points. There's, there is a pasta dinner fundraiser on June 8th for a two-year-old named Theo who is fighting brain cancer. So even if, you know, even if you can't make it, you know, you can buy a couple of tickets and contribute that, to that worthy cause. Let's see, there are two, two board members have resigned, and they're looking for new board members. So if anyone knows anyone that thinks they would be a good fit for the PAL, then please reach out, reach out to me or you can reach out to Tom Bushanovskis, who's the executive director at the PAL. There is a blood drive on June 4th at the PAL. And then there was a little bit of excitement on, I guess, this Monday night. During one of the league basketball games, a, one of the players collapsed with cardiac arrest. And the young lady, her name is Emily, I don't know her last name, but she works at the front desk. And she sprang into action and brought out a defibrillator, an AED, and was able to, between CPR, and she was trained in CPR, between CPR and the defibrillator, they were able to revive him. And they brought him to Morris Town Memorial where, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where he is now, but apparently, she did save his life.
But that's a par high loan.
Oh, yeah?
It is, yeah. And it was one of our par high fathers who was a firefighter that helped him plant the AED.
Oh.
Yeah, Lou Roman.
Great.
That's a great story.
Yeah, yeah. That's it. Any questions?
Do you have a flyer for that fundraiser, the pasta fundraiser?
I, I have one. I could forward it to you electronically. I don't have it, I don't have a hard copy.
Can you send, send it to Joanie and she'll send it out to the board?
Okay.
Yeah, send a photo to Joanie.
It's going out?
Yep. Judy?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay.
I get it, don't, aren't you sick?
Uh, Suzie?
So, critical issues met, and president myself. And this was a, a bit of a different type of critical issues meeting because we were reviewing the superintendent's evaluation. So a couple of the members were not able to attend because they're conflicted. So I do have to say thank you to Mrs. Chappelle, Mrs. Mayor, Mrs. Abraham for helping us out. Mr. Raya was one of the members present, but the other three ladies did help us out. And, and even so, it still took about three and a half hours to, to get through it. So, so thank you. And that, you know, that is what we will be discussing later on today, is the superintendent evaluation. At our next meeting, for sure, we will then discuss the board's self-evaluation. But everyone should have received a copy of the board's self-evaluation, so you'll have plenty of time to read through it. And when I say "fill in," I meant either print out, you know, the, print out the document or if you have the PDF, the, the advanced copy, you could go in and fill and saw, you know, fill, fill in whatever, any additional comments that you may have to the ones that were made by the committee. Okay, if anybody has any questions on that.
Judy?
I, I'm, I'm unclear, why are we discussing superintendent's evaluation when we all saw the board's self-evaluation? So I thought we would discuss that because we've all seen it. And then, at the next meeting, discuss the superintendent.
Okay, the reason why that happened was because we, we had a very packed meeting tonight. And we had to choose one evaluation. And we figured that it was more important to move forward with the superintendent's evaluation because that's also going to dictate a couple of other things that have to be done towards it versus our evaluation. You know, we, we don't have to talk about giving ourselves any more raises, like 0%, you know, things like that. A 0% raise, that's where we get. We will, when we get, when we get to, because that's confidential, so.
Right, no, I just.
Right, so we couldn't, we couldn't send that. And, and this just happened yesterday where we had to, we had to say, okay, we can discuss all five things or just three?
Yeah, I think the superintendent's also, evaluation's also time-bound. So I think it's important to get that one done first. So next meeting, if memory serves, is an awards ceremony in addition to the board meeting. So we may want to start closed session early again and try to do the board's self-evaluation prior to the meeting.
Mrs. Benno said that she was going to arrange it earlier. So instead of coming in at, at, I guess it would be at six, five o'clock again. I know, look at Mrs. Chappelle. I mean, if anybody has a, I mean, we could do 5:30.
Yeah, nothing says we have to get it done in that one meeting. It would be nice, but.
I mean, we don't have to get it done in that one meeting. We can, you know, but we can start it and then we can come back. I mean, it's, it's not a confidential document to us. So it's, it could leave the room with us. So we could, we could at least start it. So if we, if it makes it easier, we could do 5:30 to 6:00. And then 6:00, do our regular.
Close, closed session.
Closed session.
If we could do 5:30 to 6:00, I'd be very grateful because that is the evening of the PHS senior prom, which my daughter is attending.
Oh, absolutely.
So I would like to be there for her.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, we could definitely do 5:30.
One other suggestion would be if you wanted to have the meeting just for the evaluations on a separate day, but then you would have to advertise that and all that. So that's, that's just the suggestion.
We could start it. We could start it. And we can then continue it again. It's, again, it's, it's going to be a working document, so.
Any other questions for Suzie? Great, I just got a couple of things. So we talked, I think, in detail about the ad hoc committee, the residential development projects and some information about that. A few months ago, Dr. Mulrooney, Dr. Sutter and I met with four students from PHHS regarding an anti-vaping PSA, which they did with the help of Mr. Satch create that. It was on YouTube. Their, their message was very, very good about the detriments of vaping. So thank you, Brian, for creating that video. Then I think Dr. Mulrooney facilitated a presentation at the Parsippany Public Library, which also was very well-received. And now, these students are on a roadshow, visiting each of our elementary schools, instilling in our younger students the dangers of anti-vaping. So they've really embraced that and have moved forward. Anything you want to add to, to that?
This is part of their AP Capstone research. So it's a two-year AP course that we introduced three years ago when Sarah Townsend started as our Lumber Art Supervisor. And they're, in year one of this, they've been so inspired by the process that they've taken to share the message, so, great kids.
Yep, absolutely. Just a reminder, there were some invitations by community groups for upcoming celebrations. So please get back to Mrs. Benno's if you intend to, intend to attend those. Somebody mentioned the PEF dinner. There were a number of us who were there. Jack was there, Shiva was there, Allison was there, Suzie was there, I was there. It was, it was a great celebration. It's their, their main fundraiser, and they've done so much for our district over the years. It was good to see people who had played golf that day and the, in the, you know, banter about, about who scored what. But it was a very good, a very good celebration. And I think that's it. So we'll move on to approval of executive session one in two minutes and regular minutes of May 9th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please? A motion, please, sorry. Judy, seconded by Jack. Roll call, please.
Yes?
Mr. Berrios?
Yes?
Mrs. Kogan?
I guess she could say yes.
It's telephone for yes.
Two rigs for a yes.
Say hello? Before, as always, solve our technical difficulties.
Please leave your message for. Where's I? Your call can. Please leave your message for.
Okay, looks like Allison has lost service and will not be able to, to vote. So. Yeah, she's going to abstain, yeah.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Dr. Reich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldur? And Mr. Chaffo?
Yes. Superintendent's report, I'm sorry, superintendent's bulletin number 20, Dr. Mulrooney.
Assistant superintendent's bulletin.
The assistant superintendent's bulletin. The assistant superintendent's bulletin.
Thank you, President Chaffo. Good evening. I'm going to read verbatim what Dr. Sutter left for me, okay? Wow, I am surprised how comfortable I feel in this seat. While I'm sitting here, does anyone want a raise? Dr. Sutter also said how excited he is that we're breaking ground on the pool up Parsippany Hills. Just kidding. He did mention the Parsippany Education Foundation and how wonderful that was. Again, this was mentioned a few times, so I won't be too repetitive. But it was great to see so many alumni and so many current and former staff members involved in that program. It really was a fun event and something I won't be missing in the future. We want to thank Allison Caravano, Melissa Crouchy, and the art staff and students at Par High for putting on a wonderful art show on May 17th. A great show, a great year for our visual performing arts program. And again, we expect big things in the future from them. Tomorrow is a day off. School is closed due to our two unused snow days. We'll have tomorrow, Monday the 24th, and Tuesday the 28th. And we wish everyone a safe, happy, and healthy Memorial Day weekend. I'm going to editorialize now. On June 30th, we have our mini-grant presentations here. So the district-sponsored mini-grants will all be presented. Teachers have done a great job. Been able to see a lot of them in person. So if you can make that, it's at 3:45 after school, there will be snacks. Two days ago, it's nice when we have cross-town collaboration. Some students from Par Hills Ares Club came to Central Middle School to talk about equity and being an upstander and how we treat each other. And the kids did a fantastic job in their Par Hills gear at Central. It was kind of a nice moment. And then, and one last thing, Rockaway Meadow had some state, the state police visit their school. And they had two horses and two police dogs. It's just a really great event. And that's just a tiny sampling of the awesomeness that's happening in the district. But I wanted to add that as well. So I would like to offer you for your approval, Superintendent's bulletin items 1 through 76, with addendum and reading items 77 to 90. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Dr. Mulrooney?
Just real quick, what was that date again on the...
June 20.
It's Friday and Tuesday that they're off.
No.
The grant's June 30.
June 30.
Thursday, June 30.
Monster glance? Not me. Oh, June 30.
I'm sorry, May 30. Magic being married to me, right? Always won off, May 30.
May 30. Can we actually get an invitation? Yes, I can. I can get one.
Any other questions for Dennis? Just one, is the pool going to be called Mulrooney's Malt? With some alligators?
100%.
Okay, good. Mrs. Desco, would you please give us the secretary's report?
Hi, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motion, including the approval of several contracts for services for the 24-25 school year. Does anybody have any questions?
Timothy?
Thank you, Mr. Desco. Just a quick question, number 40, health insurance consultant. This is just a pro forma, right?
Yeah.
For Doyle?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Robin? No? Any new business? It says none. Okay. We're up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there is anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board, to please come up now and sign your name in the book so that you're ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask you not to provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments and or refer to bio 0168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Would anyone like to address the board? Would anyone else like... Yes, Mr. DeVito, please.
Hello? There we go. Yeah, Matt DeVito, resident of Parsippany since 2014. Just a few items that I wanted to bring up to you.
Excuse me, Mr. DeVito. Can you just hold the...
Is that better?
No, no, just take it out and hold it because you look very uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to bring up about, it was brought up from the communications, about podcasts. I heard that one of the suggestions was a podcast video on the integration of new parents into kindergarten. If I might offer a suggestion, I think also a one about the transition from fifth grade into middle school and additionally from eighth grade into high school. Very important, I think, having a few children in the district still. That kind of transition is kind of going to be very, very scary for some of these kids. And I think that would be helpful as well, since it's a thought. I also was lucky enough to attend the PEF Dinner as well. It was a very well-tended event. It was a lot of fun. I wanted to thank the board on the passage of budget on May 9th. That was a unanimous vote. It was a fiscally responsible budget. And I want to thank the administration on drafting it and then the board passing it. The student committee boards don't get to really talk about too many things outside of the high schools. So I was lucky enough to attend the Wizard of Oz play at Brooklawn. And it's on video on the go now, too, so you can watch it at your leisure. But it was a very, very well-tended event, and kids did a great job. And moving on, I also was able to watch... Wasn't able to attend Strings Concert for Brooklawn, and I was interested in hearing it. And I saw that it was actually being livestreamed as it was occurring. So I was able to watch it on my phone a little bit and catch some of the numbers. And the kids are really doing a great job. It's no wonder that we have received an award for our music program these past couple of years. You can tell by just even the middle schoolers how much they've improved in these years. Last Monday night, I was able to attend the choral concert for Brooklawn. It had it at the Hills because it was so large in attendance. They couldn't fit in the Brooklawn Middle School anymore to do the choral concert when you had a sixth grade that was twice as big as the seventh and eighth grade combined. So it was a very well-tended event. It was a lot of fun. Again, the video is up there, I think, yesterday, Brian. Yeah, today. Thank you, Brian. Very good. One last thing. I wanted to, I didn't want to, I couldn't correct her while she was here. I didn't want to do that while she was there. Sanika mentioned the Festival of the Arts at the Hills. That was postponed this morning because of the rain. So it's going to move to June 3rd. My daughter's in Art Honor Society. Obviously, she was made aware of that. So it didn't get passed alone to Sanika there. So that's about it. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Stockdale, and my son Zachary attends an out-of-district school. In regards to the comments made regarding preschool, I've lived in a variety of different states, and one of the states that I lived in was Boston. And my experience with my son Zachary is that it was identified when he was in Head Start that he needed services. So the data says, whenever you receive data and it says that different children have deficits, you can identify and provide those services for better outcomes. And so my recommendation, based on that data and based on my experience, is to provide those services for the children because the outcomes will be better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will close the public session. Dr. Mulrooney, would you like to address anything that was said this evening?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. We will have a roll call vote of Superintendent's bulletin number 20, items 1 through 76, with addendums 77 through 90 and read-ins. May I have a motion, please? Shito, second. Michelle, thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Berrios?
I need to recuse on 12, 16, 33, and yes to everything else.
Mrs. Kogan is on the phone here. She's not here anymore.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Abstain on item 2C and no on 78, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Recuse on appendix Q, yes to everything else. We will need to go into closed session and unconlicted boards to discuss the personnel issues. No action will be taken at the conclusion of the executive session. I do need a motion to go into closed session. Michelle, seconded by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Tim and I are conflicted, so we will not be joining you.